This time I call this meeting to order. It is the agenda of the regular meeting of the board of directors of the RDC 4B, EDC. Today is Monday, August 19th, 2019, and it is 5:33 PM, and we're in Commissioner's Chamber, City Hall. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Jones for the invocation and Mr. Lopez for the pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Father, thank you for letting us gather here today to conduct the city business. I ask for you to pray for all the law enforcement, and all those in the Army Reserves, those that take care of us in hard way. Ask for us to guide us in making the best decision for the residents of River Grande City. In all this, I ask for you. Amen.
Item two, roll call final form, Ms. Penney.
Mr. Ramirez?
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Present.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Dr. Margot? Dr. Margot is absent. Mr. Garza?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Flores?
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you, ma'am. Item three, approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
Mr. President, there's no changes to the minutes. I accept as read.
Okay, we got a motion on the table.
I'll second that.
Second, Ms. Perez, River Grande City, we're seeing a pass by say nine.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. Item four, financial report, Ms. Guian.
Yes, sir. In your packet, you have the revenue and expense report. This was printed on the 13th of August, and it does not reflect summary of your revenue for sales tax and/or other. That's yet to be updated, and you'll see that further along in the packet. But as far as expenditures go, we're within our budget. We're at 91.67% of the fiscal year. There's a couple of amendments that we've been asked to make to it, minor amendments to balance the figures for accounting. But if you turn over to the city of River Grande City by fiscal year, from October 99 to September 2019, which is the first sheet that has the green chart, you will see in there that the fiscal year is doing very well as far as sales tax returns to the city and the EDC. We are very close to the 1415 year. I know Mr. Cantu and myself have been talking about this. We're within $38,122 difference from where we were at in 1415. So as a side note, we anticipate we're going to be closing the year in the positive above the estimated sales tax for 2018, 2019. And Mr. Cantu provides these charts so that you can see month-by-month comparison, and I don't know if Mr. Cantu wants to add anything to it, but so far, we have a very, very good sales tax year in the city of River Grande City.
Yeah, I would love to add, like, if we could say now, you know, sales have continued to raise, rising. They have continued to run 9% right now for all the year. The $38,000 from 1415, which has been the highest growth in year for us so far. About one more month, we may get that spark.
So we, in the expenditure report, you see about $763,000. I guess accounting hasn't caught up yet in adding up those figures, but in EDC collections, we have $938,325.38 collected in sales tax, which is really great because it's actually, you know, we're, like I said, we're very close to 2018, and we'll be finishing out the year in the positive. So that's really encouraging news for us. And that's really it. If there's any specific questions regarding the expenditure report or these charts, we happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions, comments? Very good. So it looks like we're going in the positive direction, which is good. I hope to see that same positive growth in the years to come as well. So thank you all. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. Item five, public hearing. I formally called this hearing at 5:38. At this time, can I call, I call anyone present wishing to comment to do so, one at a time, please. You should state your name. If you represent an organization, state its name before you give your comments. If you have written material to enter into the record, please say so and summarize it briefly before providing a copy to the board, if you have not, if you have not already submitted to the EDC office. Okay, so at this time, I'll open it for comments.
For the record, we have not received any written comment to our office.
Okay. Again, I call on anyone present wishing to be heard to please come forward and provide their comments. Anyone? This is the final call for anyone present to come forward and provide their comments. If there's no one present, then at this time, 5:39, I close the public hearing. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item six, workshop session. Ms. Guian.
Yes. In this section of the meeting, you have the proposed budget for 2019, 2020, along with your work plan that is associated with that. Let me begin with the work plan. You have projects under infrastructure, tourism development, economic development, marketing, and community promotions, as well as Main Street enhancement. So going down that list of projects, we have a change from our previous year to this year. We are looking at reduction in one of the grants through the Economic Development Grant Program, and that is the Job Creation Grant Program. I have done so to meet a request for some administrative expenditures, and of course, it's up to the will of the board to allow this. We have a desire to push our grant programs in the coming year and to reinforce that board approval is required before any construction of projects. And this is something that we want you to help us share because a lot of times, we get an applicant or an interested applicant who has already started on their project and they're seeking assistance. It's imperative that they come to the board beforehand. Any expenditures that they make prior to board approval, they do so at their own risk. And so what we would like is that in the initiation of that project idea, that they come to us first so we get an application for your review and approval. Another thing that we're implementing is that, and we're going to be a little bit stricter on this, is that we want our applicants to be present when they are requesting for assistance, that they be present at our meeting to request funding. So that'll be a requirement of the grant as well, and so we'll make sure to update our applications, Melinda, to do that.
Good question, Ms. Guian. I understand that St. Ives already closed on the property across Walmart.
Yes.
So we should begin, I guess, moving dirt here soon. But my question is, we set aside $150,000 towards that incentive for 10 years, and that incentive begins occupancy, correct?
Correct. At first.
So I don't foresee that happening this fiscal year. So that $150,000 will remain there or can be utilized or transferred to other needs if need be?
So this, this amount here in the work plan is not in our budget as of yet.
General plan?
We will have to come back to our budget when we get that, when we get close to that occupancy, to restructure that.
So it's not a budget issue.
No, but the project is. And so I wanted you to be aware that this is something that we still have to have public hearing on. We still have to inform. And so we include it in our work plan, even though the expenditure is not going to be happening at this, at this time. But you're right, St. Ives has closed on property, and they're in the process of conveyance of the land dedications to the city and to the EDC, and we expect that hopefully by, you know, midweek. So depending on the processing time at our local clerk's office.
Very good. Another question I had is on the housing, affordable housing project. We got $25,000 to the side to give, I guess, to this development company to build its homes. What is the status on that, and how many houses have they built? How many incentives have we given out thus far?
So if you recall, Affordable Homes came to us asking us to help fund their housing, Affordable Housing Project at Morningstar, and that's just down the street here from City Hall. Their agreement calls for us to fund them $5,000 a home, up to 10 homes a year for five years. And in the first year, and I've got planning here with us, they provided two occupancy permits. And so in year one, we only paid out $10,000, which was for two homes. Now, right now, they've got three permits and three homes under construction, and that's what we expect that they will be asking for. I don't know how far along they are in that. Gilbert does, you know, his office does inspections. He could tell us a little bit more about how close they are to occupancy.
I think they're 25% this year.
So I anticipate we're going to be receiving some notice of those three occupancies this fiscal year. And I don't know how quickly thereafter they will generate another project, but I don't think that they will get to 10 in this year.
Okay.
Now, this program or this agreement with Affordable Homes ends in December of 2022.
Five years.
So one year, one year, they don't build, they don't get?
They don't get.
They don't get.
So they build two or three, they get $5,000 for each one, and that's it?
Correct.
But we're budgeting up to 25?
Up to 25, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then further along, you will see we've made the modification to the Port and 755 Transportation Project. That is currently in process with TechDOT to incorporate into a system that they have before they go to the federal government to initiate its classification. We do have new to this work plan is the Core Project, and I have planning here in the room that could attest to the success that we are having downtown in cleaning up commercial properties. I would like the board to consider, and I think Mr. Garza had also talked to us about this, consider the cleaning of commercial, dilapidated commercial properties outside of the Main Street. That's, of course, at the city's discretion, and as of yet, I don't think we've had anybody, or at least we've had any project outside of the city limits that we've tapped into, but we're currently working on the downtown one, and we've had one project cleared out, and that is over next to the former Brownie Station. And then we have currently in progress the Aguilar Home on Second Street. So I have to applaud Gilbert for reaching out to these property owners, and they're beginning to see the benefit of having our assistance to cleaning up some of these areas that provide blight and discouragement to the neighbors. So thank you, Gilbert, for helping us out with this project. Moving along in marketing, this is combined marketing, EDC together with what we allocate to the Main Street. We're looking at about $92,950. Remember that we are only allowed to spend up to 10% of our revenues on marketing and promotion, so we're within limit. And then you move on to the Main Street enhancement. You've got some of the projects outlined there. You have some revitalization projects in there, along with the facade improvement. And just to give you an update on facade, we have had Mr. Barrera. Is he, is he done with his awning? I think he's still working on some of the...
They finished the awning on Friday, and they're going to start paying this week.
Okay, so there's been progress on that end. The other one we're waiting on is Mr. Canales, and I know that he's already pulled a permit with our planning office to install the awning at the building where Pinas, Red del Colchón, that corner on Britain and Main. What else do we have? We've got the downtown core project on there. We have a Main Street walking tour also in the mix. And Angela, will you give them a copy of what we're working on right now? We should have these installed before the start of the fiscal year, and I wanted you to see a sample of the work that Nancy and Melinda have been working on because I think you're going to appreciate the research and the, thank you, the work that this is going to do to bring tourism to our community, especially those history buffs that want to know more about our community. And Melinda, I can't say it enough, but thank you. And Nancy, I know you did a lot of research to get this together. Thank you, Angela. So this is just an example of what will go up, signage similar to what the Texas Historical Commission does for historical designation. These will be installed in front of these properties, and I think right now, we have, what, about nine buildings? And I just, I just think this is an awesome project.
This is wonderful.
Very nice.
I agree.
Just scan it on your cell phone, and it'll give you the whole history?
So the purpose of this is to make it an audio experience for those that want to take this back home with them or just want some assistance in the narrative. We will have a voiceover audio recording of this so that you can listen to the history of the building as you're standing in front of it. And of course, we're working with City IT to make this, make this work.
What's the, these nine areas, what's the walking distance between them?
I'd have to ask Nancy.
Because they're all located downtown. There's only one home, which is the guy who entered, that is...
On Second.
So they're all in the one strip of...
Yes, but it starts at the Kelsey Bass Museum.
Right.
And then you just go further down to the warehouse and then to the entrance.
A walking tour. Nice?
Yep.
Cool. It's going to be interesting.
I agree.
When do these go up? Before October, when, before October, November, when the Winter Texans are here?
Well, we're going to send them for spring, hopefully, initially.
Cool. Good deal.
Are they going to be located where exactly? Outside each building?
Outside.
And how big are they going to be?
14 by 18. They're going to be on their old pre-standing pole.
Okay. Very nice.
Very nice. Great job.
And then the mural project, we do have an example of that, and I'll have Angela pass that, pass that out. This comes before the city commission this week.
Wednesday.
On Wednesday for their final blessing, but we have an artist who is going to create this piece to have on exhibit in our downtown area. And so we are working with the Main Street Program on this. And you'll have, the location is right there at Extreme Party Place, so it's right off of Main Street.
Do we agree on which one? I know they showed us this sample.
The, the, it's the real one.
The real one, but without the helmet, right?
Well, this is just an illustration. It's going to be painted, so it's not going to have a graphic like this. This is an illustration of what it should look like.
Can you show me? It's a sample.
That's a, that's a sample, just so you can see an example of their work.
But this is what he is proposing to do.
The proposed conceptual design is the one on the first page, and you have it in black and white, and just kind of to see the color scheme that they're looking at. And then on the second page, you have the wall in which we will have this artwork installed. And then the last page is an example of the artist's work. I don't know where they have the, we didn't get detail, but they've done work elsewhere.
Right, but just to show that they...
Who's the artist?
The artist, and I don't, I know I have it...
His name is Tony, and he's from La Jolla, and then he's going to be working with someone that has a tattoo shop here in New York.
Combination of a local and a...
Detroit region.
Yeah, a local artist and an artist from...
Where's this wall?
The wall is in Extreme Party Place.
Oh.
Right across Grandy Garden.
Are they in agreement with everything?
Oh, the property owners? Yes. Nancy, Nancy reached out to them for permission. We just need to get them to sign the...
Right of entry, or make sure all that is...
And then in the work plan, you will also see the preservation projects, the restoration of vintage signs. That's, that's, that's a fundraising project that the Main Street Program will be looking at. And then, of course, continuing with the mural project, there is, there is a plan to get some dollars raised, get community buy-in to help us install these murals throughout the city. And that is the work plan. You also have in your packet the, an example, and that's, that's, I think you might have gotten it during the public hearing section, an example of what the new work plan for the Main Street will include. And it's everything that's in here, but it's just more goal-driven, so it gives you assignments. I'm going to turn everyone back to tab five, I'm sorry. To tab, yes, tab five. At the very end of tab five, you will see a copy of the newly styled Main Street work plan as the state is recommending. And so you have an example of what they're going to be following to work on our projects in this next fiscal year. Just a different style, but the content is the same. Are there any questions so far with the work plan? That just gives you a peek into the expenditure that you will see in the budget. If there aren't any questions about the work plan, I will go ahead and move along to the So the proposed budget that we're looking at is projecting $1,017,380 in sales taxes. And I know Lionel can probably explain that a little bit better, but we've had a really good sales tax year this year, and when we went back and forth on that final figure, Lionel feels pretty confident that we will come very close to have not surpassed this projected sales tax revenue for, for the EDC. Going down on other financing sources, different from, from the previous years, we're working with the city to bring in some transfer in funds to help assist us with some projects that we have in our, in our duties and responsibilities to the city, and that includes $11,025 in general transfer funds and $32,450 in hotel tax funds. Now, for the hotel tax fund, we are going to have to put a contract into place before the city can transfer those dollars, so I'm going to work with legal to get something in writing that stipulates the expenditure reporting and the funds that will be transferred for us to carry out some of those activities. And if you want to see what those activities are, we have a copy of that. Do you want to pass that out?
Ms. Guian, do you want to touch on our conversation in the group, some of the huge rates about how, whether we could use photo funds for some specific items?
Yes, so what we did is, is we talked to the comptroller's office specifically with those that handle the Economic Development Fund and the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund, and they pretty much vetted our project list and said we are approved to fund these projects. They have also encouraged us to get a contract with the city that just stipulates that they will be turning over these amount of dollars, and in return, the EDC will be delivering these projects. And then we'll give them a quarterly report to the city secretary just as we are moving along to report the expenditures and, and progress of those projects. And then you'll see the city general fund expenditures on that list as well. But we have gone through and gotten this approved through the agency, so...
So the money can be moved then?
Yes, sir. There is a specific statute that grants us the ability. The delegating management of funded activities is something that is provided to the governing body. It specifically says the governing body of a city may delegate the management or supervision of programs funded by the hotel tax by written contract. And that's what the comptroller's office said. Just get a contract, and you're, you're good to go. And then, of course, submit your quarterly reports to the city. And then, of course, it goes into detail in the statute that, you know, our books are available to, for inspection, but finance keeps records of all of our expenditures, so that's always available. Are there any questions about this section? Okay.
Any questions or comments?
So moving along, the, in the budget, you'll see our operating expenditures as well as the Economic Development Projects that are listed in the work plan. The city has entertained a, an increase in, a pay increase for employees, so that's factored into this. I know my employees probably have not heard that yet, but surprise. But we, of course, have been working with city to make this, make these numbers work. The very end of the budget has an amount for furniture that has been adjusted. So if you recall, in the work plan I explained to you, we reduced one of the funding grants to accommodate an administrative expenditure, and that's in your Main Street budget, which calls for $8,000 in furniture for the Main Street office. And of course, I've talked to Nancy about what her needs are in the office to, to address this, this price. And so Nancy, I'd like for you to share with us what your wants and needs are for the EDC, I mean, for the Main Street office downtown.
Because of the location of the Main Street office, it's centered downtown, it's right on Main Street, mostly, if not all, of our tourism goes straight into our office. If they call City Hall or they come here, they're always referred to the Main Street office. And since, and so because of that, I do think that we do need to give it a little bit of TLC. The only thing right now that I think would be needed is a, is a desk. The one that we have has been there at, you know, has been owned by the EDC for, for years since Bonnie and Valerie were there, so, you know, it's got some markings on top and, which I don't, I don't think looks very professional or welcoming to the people that are coming in. As per Main Street meetings, we have our meetings there. I have to, I always set up two tables for the meetings. You know, sometimes I dress them up with some table covers just to make it a little bit more pleasant for them. And so I think that that works out for us, just because we can remove the tables after the meeting, it allows for more space for visitors. When we have the super raffle, for example, my office gets, and I think Mr. Perez has walked in and seen it, I don't know if any else, anybody else has walked in during the super raffle time when we're getting all those sponsorships or bikes, and, or we're working on another project for like the signage for, for the businesses on Main. And, and so we do need that space for those types of activities there. So I think having a permanent table will just not allow us to utilize the spaces as I think that we, that we have been, you know...
Excuse me, but you said, you mentioned, you put up tables and, for, for meetings?
Yes, I, I have, you know, some of those portable tables, and I, I set those up for the meetings every time that I have a meeting. I don't think that it's, that we need a, a permanent table, a heavy wooden conference table like we have at the EDC. Maybe if we can utilize the Kelsey Bass for, for meetings or bring them here, you know, however you guys prefer.
Yeah, can come here.
I think that could be also a good idea.
And they're recorded.
So, yeah, so for, but needed, I think, the desk. And then I do want to make some movements in the office, like, for example, there is a cabinet that is dividing the other, the suite next door with mine, and in that one, Wele, and, and, I mean, I applaud Wele for making it. It's a really nice looking cabinet, but I think that if we install a shelf, I want to put the desk right in front of it so that it can look a little bit better, and, and maybe perhaps a seating area, maybe a bench and a chair, you know, for, I know the Winter Texans, when they come in, they also come in in large groups. We have up to 13... Um, we have up to 30, you know, the max, which is the maximum for the trolley tours. You know, they come in and they're all in a group. If there's a larger table in there, you know, it's, it's just, it's gonna be a lot of, uh, um, it's gonna be in the way, in other words. It's not gonna allow for walkability and space. That's what I, that's what I think.
In other words, you, you wanna, you wanna have a, a welcome office to where there's, it's not cluttered, it's not, doesn't have so much furniture in there?
Exactly.
You just want something simple, something to where it's welcoming to the winter Texans when they come in?
Yes.
So from what I gathered, you said a desk, a coordinating bookshelf, and some seating? Is that what I understood you're saying?
Yes.
Is the furniture that's there, uh, was that custom-made or was that bought off of furniture somewhere?
No, well, the, the desk that I mentioned has been there forever. We had it at the other EDC office, it was already there. I've been working for the city for about six years now, so, and it was already there when I went, when I started working with the city. Um, everything else...
The reason I ask because I think some of the furniture that we have here at City Hall has also been custom-made, correct?
Correct, yes.
So I don't know if some of the furniture there at the old City Hall was also custom-made or we need to stay within the same decor?
Right.
Kind of make it fit, you know, and match?
Exactly.
Something like what we have in our EDC office with work, being that the historical downtown...
Right, something that goes with the historic history.
Well, whatever you all need, I mean, at the end of the day, just, I mean, you all know what your needs are and we'll support it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, if I, basically just, I walked into, uh, a Sutherland store, and they have, they have, uh, furniture very similar to the ones we have here in, in City Hall.
Very nice.
At Sutherland? Or do they have one in McAllen or...
Uh, I know there's one in Port Isabel, and there's one in, uh...
They have the rustic furniture? They have the rustic furniture?
Real pretty furniture.
Yeah, just to touch on it, you know, I'm, I'm basically the one pushing the, the furniture on, on Main Street, you know, I think, you know, that it, it, it can look a lot better than what it is right now, you know? We, we're having bigger flow of, of winter Texans coming in, and majority of times they're standing outside in the heat, waiting, and I just want to make it more comfortable for the, for, you know...
Tourists.
Tourism, you know, coming in and the place looking professional. I think that's the only office that, that we have that is not up to date, and I think it needs some little, a little TLC on it.
Very good. Won't you give us some, some estimates on, uh, some furniture?
Um, I don't know if, uh, if...
I don't have, uh, I, I did get something from Nancy that has quotes from Jose Luis for custom furniture, and I don't recall if that was included in your packet, but we do have those pieces that Nancy is, is mentioning here. Let's see if I have it. And you can go over it, Nancy, this is your, did I bring it? Oh, here it is. So the custom desk, uh, with certain measurements to include recycled wood, stain, sealer, and, and I think many of you have already gone into the EDC office, so you know what that looks like. You've gone into, who else has that furniture downtown?
Betsy's Landing?
Betsy's Landing has that, the museum.
And Christian former office, I believe, also.
So you have a, you, sorry, maybe we can get the one from Betsy's Landing. Trey?
They have really nice furniture, that was a Luis made.
But did they keep it for the, for the tenant?
It's there for the Valley Metro.
Oh, wow, that's an idea.
Wow, okay.
You can just...
Well, there's, there's custom, but, so just so you know the, the style, um, so yes, Nancy has a quote for a desk, and it's very comparable to what we paid for our desks at, at the EDC office. You have this table, um, that Nancy just referenced, that one's a little bit pricier, uh, $4,700. I don't, I don't remember what we paid for ours.
Yes, I had asked for the table by itself, just to see, you know, but then he gave me the quote of the table and chairs.
Right.
Which, yeah, I guess is a bit pricey. He said, uh, it was gonna be $150 per chair, so if we decided to go just with the table by itself, uh, but that, that would be, you know, would be a little bit less, but I don't, I don't think that, that expenditure needs to be made at this.
You have a shelf, uh, is that the one you were referring to?
Yes.
The custom-built shelf at 580? The custom-built bench and coffee table and two chairs?
Two chairs.
Is that what you're talking about for seating?
Right.
And then there's a custom-built shelf to cover the opening from your suite to 508 suite, right? And that one's, um, 11, oh, $1,150. You're welcome to look at this if you want. We, you know, would have to see what, you know, what your needs are.
Have you made the table and chairs, it comes up to about $1,000?
Well, I think that after this year's winter Texan season and the number of tourists that we had, we can expect to see more. Uh, every year it gets bigger and we have more visitors to our office, so...
And then with a walking tour?
And now we have people coming into town to see our buildings and read about them. You will have a lot of traffic. So that's really the only significant change in our budget as far as furniture and supplies are concerned. But are there any other questions about any of the expenditure or proposed, uh, budget items in this budget? Having the transfers in allows us to, to meet the expectation that we already have, and so I want to, you know, uh, give credit because I know Mr. Ramirez was very tough on me putting this budget together and made sure that we accomplished what is EDC, and that's what I've done with this budget. So if there's any other questions or concerns, I'll be happy to address those right now. If there's anything you want to add or change to it, this is the time to let me know so I can make a note.
Anybody, any comments, concerns, questions? If not, I guess we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the adjournment.
I'll second that.
Very good. This time, uh, it's 5:10, and we're adjourned. Thank you all so much.